Good evening. Thank you very much. Should like to call this Fairfield City Council meeting to order, please. And the invocation this evening will be led by our chaplain-
We'll do roll call first.
John Takahuchi, sir. If you would come forward, please.
Okay. I'm gonna do roll call first. Councilmember Bertoni?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Thank you. And the invocation now, John Takahuchi, retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's really a privilege to be able to do this. And before starting, I'd like to thank all of the pastors that have stepped up here, you know, and done their thing. It's a reminder that all the authority that you all have comes from you-know-where. So, okay. Father in heaven, thank you so much for making us citizens of the greatest country on the earth. And please help our council and all of our elected officials do the right thing. Amen.
And thank you, John. And would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our first item of business will be council reports. Councilman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
Yeah, I'll skip the report tonight, Mayor. It's always glad to see our council chambers packed with people, though. So, I'm gonna skip this report and we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I'm gonna follow suit with my colleague and also say that it's great to see this great chamber filled. This is how we get the city's business done. So, it's a good look. Welcome, everyone, and we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moy, please.
I'm gonna take their time. I want to thank all of you. And it's gonna be a special thanks tonight, since we're coming up on Thanksgiving. I always think of November as Thanksgiving month. And every year, I know we have another council meeting, but every year, I like to thank my colleagues for everything that they do because they are true public servants. They serve through no matter what it is. They may not feel well. I may not feel well. We may feel cranky. We may have something wrong at home. And we certainly do not do it for the pay. It's because there is not pay. It actually pretty much costs all of us to do this. But it is a public service. And I want to remind everybody that as far as thanks go, this Saturday, we will be having a Veterans Day Parade. And I hope every one of you are out there because we wouldn't have this country without the veterans. And I know some city employees are veterans. And I know that our mayor is a veteran. And then I wanted to talk to you about something personal. And that is, it's coming up on the anniversary of when I had my last serious chemotherapy. It was in November. And I like to remind people of it, not because of me, but because of what it means. And by the grace of God, I lived when the doctors told my husband and me that I was gonna die. I have an incurable cancer. And I, in that time, met a lot of other people who had leiomyosarcoma. Not a lot. Six people in a million get it. So, I won the lottery. And I've met other people who won that same lottery. And I say that jokingly, of course, because it's brutal. But in that time, I've lost a lot of those people. And another person I love very much didn't get that, but got a sarcoma. And so, I wondered, as my friends died, why me? Why? How is it that somebody like me, when so many other better people live, how come I? How come me? And after that chemo, I had to decide if I was gonna run again for reelection. And I've heard people saying, oh, I was gonna die, and I wasn't gonna do this. I decided to be defiant, which is like me, and not die and run again. And but that wasn't everything I was supposed to do. And then I accidentally tripped into a job at Heather House. And at Heather House is a, it's a place for women and children who are homeless. And I was in there, and one day, a lady came in who had been battered. Her boyfriend tried to drown her. And she was soaking wet, and she had no clothes, except for what was on her, which isn't right. And one of the ladies with whom I'm lucky to work called me in because I also have had diabetes since I was a kid, type 1 diabetes. So, I went in, and the lady told me my feet hurt. And I said, "Oh." And she says, "I have diabetes." And I said, "Can I take your shoes off?" And she said, "Okay." And she was scared. And I took her shoes off and her socks, and I cleaned her feet. And when I was down on the ground cleaning this woman's feet, I got hit. It was like lightning. That is what you are here for. Do you understand? That's it, right there. That's why you live. If it's just one person that you help, that's why you live. And the reason why I tell this story is because you may not know it. All these people, so many of them are employees, and they change people's lives every day. They touch somebody every day. And it doesn't have to hit you like it hit me. But I want to tell you, I'm so thankful for all of you. I'm so thankful to the people of this city who have trusted me enough to be a leader. And I hope God trusts me enough to keep me alive and keep me going so I can clean some more homeless people's feet. And so, I can continue to serve you. And I, again, just want to thank every one of you. I know you've been through hard times with us in the city. And again, I want to thank my colleagues. So, I know that was long, but think about it. Think about what you do. It's not for money. Think about what you do with your soul, you know? That's what's gonna get you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
It's probably a little difficult to follow what Kat said. And Kat, I would just tell you that your passion and dedication is evident. And I would like to actually tell the people that are here tonight, and probably I know about half of you, is I certainly understand the reason that you're here. I think we all understand the reason that you're here. And I will tell you that it's nice to see, whether you are for or against salt and pepper, scotch and soda, whatever, that you actually can all come together, and it's dignified, it's respectful. We appreciate that. I appreciate you. I think we all do. And like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people here that we know. And everybody has their own trials and tribulations. And we'll get through it. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll cede the floor, and we'll get on with business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I should like to thank all of you for being here this evening, too. For whatever the reason you're here, you're exercising your democratic right to participate in a city council meeting. So, thank you very much. And I just have a couple of things. The first one, though, is a letter that I received, and it's addressed, Dear Mr. Price, "Today I join the people of the USA in the sadness and grief due to recent fires that ravaged Northern California. My thoughts are with the families and loved ones of all those affected by this disaster. I wish a speedy recover to those injured and offer my condolences to the people who have lost their lives. I hope the people and the country will swiftly rebuild and recreate the material losses. I commend the efforts of local authorities, firefighters, emergency services, in their bravery, professionalism, and effectiveness in addressing this disaster. The Turkish-American community and people of Turkey stand in solidarity with the Californians during these hard times. Availing of the opportunity, Mr. Price, please accept the assurances of my highest consideration. The Turkish Consul General, San Los Angeles." And then just a couple of very quick notes. We are going to be celebrating Veterans Day on Saturday. But on Friday, there will be an occasion for veterans, citizens, to come down to Mike's Autobody Shop. It's something that that autobody shop does every year. This year, they have selected two Travis Air Force Base servicemen to receive completely reconditioned cars, two of them. And they're doing it on Friday so that those veterans and their families will be able to drive those cars in the Veterans Day Parade. And that makes you feel pretty good about living in Fairfield, doesn't it? Well, thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Mayor and council, I have a couple of items for you tonight. You already talked about the Veterans Day Parade. And so, just so everyone knows, at 10 o'clock, there'll be the actual music concert that will occur at the Fairfield Center for Creative Arts. And then subsequent to that, there will be the actual parade at 12:30 in downtown. And I promised Margaret I'd give a plug for that. Let me get this open. There we go. So, the other thing that I wanted to share, and I'm really lucky tonight that I have a lot of individuals here that I otherwise would not be able to deliver this message to face-to-face. So, I'm kinda lucky that I get to do that. And I really want to share with you what an amazing Public Works Department you have. So, a couple of weeks ago, I got to attend Public Works. Every so often, they hold a large meeting where the entire department gets together. And it's really cool because this is an opportunity for them to share across the entire department, rank and file, management supervisors, all the different things that are going on in the department. And in this meeting a couple of weeks ago, they got to share a lot of what they're doing in terms of all the amazing work they did over the past year. And so, I took the facts and information that were shared, and I prepared for you this one-page handout that you have for you at the dais right now. And I also have it for you up here to share for the community on TV. And a couple of things that I want to point out. One is, you have a highly decorated Public Works Department. We have a vehicle maintenance division under the leadership. I know Dave Rentschler's here, and I think Sean Christensen somewhere around in the back, who have just done phenomenal work. They've been ranked in the top 100 in this country for many, many years. And they've also been distinguished and noticed by the American Public Works Association. You also have fabulous individual employees. So, not only was David Rentschler recognized as being manager of the year, you have Daniel Camaro, who's recognized as employee of the year. And I think somewhere in the back was Terry Lucini. And she was recently recognized for her work over at Rockville Hills Park. But what is just absolutely amazing, and I just want to, don't want to run through this handout point by point, but I do want to kind of run through some of the great work that they did over the past year because it will really help give you a great perspective of the productivity, the innovation, the resourcefulness, the types of attributes that really define our Public Works Department. So, let's talk about vehicle maintenance. Over the past year, they completed 6,791 vehicle maintenance work orders. They managed the parts and stores inventory and provided customer service to all city departments, purchased, ordered, and issued almost 35,000 public safety vehicle parts and over 12,520 stores items. And what I really want to point out about our vehicle maintenance division, I had an opportunity to tour their operation. And Sean has been a mastermind behind really reinventing how we manage our stores. And it's a really top-notch professional operation that he's put together there. Something else is quite notable. I remember Councilwoman Bertoni, you had asked me a couple of years ago about what are we doing around environmentalism and to help save the earth. So, our Public Works folks, the vehicle maintenance folks, have implemented renewable diesel that reduces greenhouse gas emissions by about 80%. And that was in all of our vehicles. And Pat Giles, who manages our corporation yard, was able to explain to me that the feat by which they accomplished this was, in his past life at Contra Costa County, they made a similar switch. And I don't remember what the number was, but there was some number of vehicles that basically went out of service. We didn't suffer any of that here in Fairfield. So, it just really shows you the depth and quality of what we have. George Schimboff is here to represent the water distribution and sewer collection folks. So, just to give you a sense of the great work that they did, 120 miles of sewer mains were cleaned and 23 miles of laterals were cleaned. And the analogy I have here is that would take you from Fairfield to Truckee. 166 water service repairs were made and 26 water main repairs. So, just to give you a perspective, there are 230 workdays in a year. Our Streets, Traffics, and Facilities, and I see Stephen Harris, I think, is somewhere here, who manages our Streets Division, really doing fabulous work. So, our Measure P Street Team has repaired 44,980,000 square feet of base failure repair on residential streets, preventative proactive work, 728 sidewalk offsets, 618 traffic signs were repaired or replaced, and 375 street lights were repaired or replaced. Our Landscape, Storm Drains, and Open Space Team, again, just fabulous work. So, they responded to, in the past year, 648 calls for service for trees. That's about 10% of our tree inventory. They picked up 984 cubic yards of debris, cleaned 300-plus cubic yards from creeks and channels, which would be equal to 120 pickup truck loads. And they mowed and sprayed over 66 acres of road sides, which would be equal to 68 miles long, eight feet wide. And our Building Maintenance folks, so Michael Allen is somewhere out here. He's doing absolutely fabulous work. And the team that he's put together keeps our buildings in tip-top shape and has just done really great work with a whole bunch of tenant improvements throughout the city. And really just notable for the amount of work that they do with the resources they have. And last year, they completed about 904 work orders. So, really, what I wanted to do was just really promote the work that they're doing. I wanted to celebrate our Public Works Department with you and share with you both visually and verbally the amazing work they're doing. Thank you. And in terms of the agenda, Mayor and council, there's one item. We have a memo for you on the item regarding streets. There's a $91. We had to revise the resolution because we had a $91. The contract was $91 less than what we had in the agenda.
So noted. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have anything to report. Thanks.
We then turn to presentations. And we have two. And this first one, I will be doing.
And this is Jeff Traeger, honored for 50 years in the music business.
And this is a very, very special one because this evening, we're going to recognize a man who's made some significant differences in our lives. So, Mr. Jeff Traeger, would you come forward, please? And I know many of you are here this evening because you, you too, recognize what Mr. Traeger has done for this community. So, Jeffrey, if you would just stand right here, please. This is the Office of the Mayor, City of Fairfield, proclamation, Jeff Traeger Day, November 7, 2017. Whereas Jeff Traeger, a San Francisco native and Solano County version of Bill Graham, celebrates 50 years in the music business in 2017. And whereas, from the 1960s through the 1990s, Jeff Traeger was a record promoter who was the first to get several hit records into heavy radio rotation, including Ike and Tina Turner's 1968 cover of Otis Redding's "I've Been Lovin' You Too Long," and Vangelis' 1981 number-one hit, "Chariots of Fire," and promoted records from the Eagles to Linda Ronstadt to the Rolling Stones. And whereas, for 10 years, Jeff Traeger co-produced the annual Voices of Latin Rock Concert for Autism Awareness and relocated to Solano County in 2000. He led an annual fundraising concert from 2007 to 2010 to benefit the music program at Crystal Middle School in Sassoon City, featuring special guests who played alongside Crystal students, including Traeger's longtime friend, Greg Ericko, original drummer for Rock and Roll Hall of Fame rock group Sly and the Family Stone. And whereas, other local Traeger-produced benefits include two for Fun on the Run and one for Archway Recovery Services, both held in Fairfield, and one for Relief for Victims of Typhoon Hayan in the Philippines, held in Vallejo. Traeger produced a benefit for local musician Herman Wilson called Hugs for Herms to raise money for Wilson's multiple sclerosis treatment. And since 2013, he has also produced the annual Pink Fest concerts to raise money for Vacaville-based cancer nonprofit, Pink Lemonade. And whereas Jeff Traeger also books musical acts for the Sticky Rice Bistro, Manka Steakhouse, Vino Godfather's Winery, Silos in Napa, and the Seven Artisans Winery, among others. And since 2015, he has produced Jeff Traeger Presents Concert Series at Fairfield's Downtown Theater, including sold-out shows like Carlos Reyes and Friends, Divas of Soul, Lindsay Elm, Van Bysse's The Voice, Tower of Power, frontman, Lenny Williams, and most recently, James Garner's Tribute to Johnny Cash. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim November 7, 2017, to be Jeff Traeger Day and commend him for his outstanding contribution to the music industry and to the community. Congratulations, Jeff. Congratulations, Jeff.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and the millions watching at home. Two million walking and watching. Um, I met Jeff in, uh, 2007, and I was doing a story on the Crystal Middle School. And, um, certain stories about, uh, this past, and I was like, wow, that's incredible, I could do a story on you. And, uh, so then we became friends. I mean, these days, you're promoting a show, I've seen people, they put something on the mint page, and they think that's promoting. Awesome, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, yes, so, okay, good. Yeah, so, uh, just recently, I was talking to Jeff, and, uh, he told me, you know what? Uh, he had, uh, and I asked him if I can tell the story. He had to see a urologist. And so, he's, he's in the office, and, um, you know, he's, uh, getting ready for the procedure, the nurse walks in, readies him for the procedure, and as she's readying for the procedure, he looks up and asks, after, um, "Do you like Conduction?" That's the next show coming up, and I'm thinking, yeah, that's just the, uh, yeah. So he's always promoting. And here's a brief video of, uh... Like a left-handed one, all right. Let me close that. Okay, could I close that thing there? There we go. Just talk amongst yourselves for a second. Yeah, yeah, sure, why not? Yeah. Okay. It's worth waiting for, believe me. There we go. You're up?
Hello, we love Johnny Cash. I hear the train a-coming, it's rolling around the bend. And I ain't seen the sunshine since, I don't know when. I'm stuck in a fulsome prison, and time keeps dragging on. But that train keeps a-rolling, on down to Santa.
Hey, Jeff, this is a, uh, a proclamation, a certificate of recognition, from Assemblyman Jim Frazier, presented to Jeff Traeger in commemoration of 50 exceptional years in the music industry, honoring your outstanding service to the people of the City of Fairfield over the past 17 years, including your dedicated efforts to ensure young musicians receive vital resources to expand their musical talents, as well as your steadfast commitment to promote the Downtown Theater of Fairfield. On behalf of the people of the 11th Assembly District, I extend our best wishes for your continued success in supporting the entertainment industry and music and the arts in our region, bestowed on November 7, 2017, Fairfield, California. California State Legislature, Jim Frazier.
And one more, Jeff, and this one is a very special one. Not only is this the Jeff Traeger Day in the City of Fairfield, but Jeff, this is the key to the city. And I never...
Uh, thank you all for, uh, being patient, and I, I, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate this, this, uh, award and this day. Little did I know, my, my good friend Rudy came down from Sacramento, my best friend, we met 50 years, we met the day that I started in the record business, and he took the time to come down, and we've been many, many, these, many, many years of friendship, and you, you can never replace that. Um, I, I've been so fortunate, I want to thank my mom and dad. My dad especially, because he's the one who said, you know, I, you'll find something. Cause I didn't know what I wanted to do, I was a terrible student, I just, I, I, and my father was a principal, that's the ironic thing. And I went to City College for five years, and if you know what City College is, it's a two-year school. So, anyway, I didn't know what I wanted to do, and my father just took me, uh, took me for a long ride and said, "Look, it'll find you, just don't worry about it." And, uh, my life changed when I met George Moscone, the late George Moscone, uh, and I've worked with some of the greatest artists that you can ever imagine, I'm, I'm so, I'm so fortunate. Um, and, and through meeting all these artists, I've been able to utilize that to work with different causes, uh, such as Autism Awareness for 10 years, uh, Pink Lemonade with my good friend Margarita Lopez here, uh, this is five years we've done this, uh, Tony introduced me to Archway. So, it's, it's things like that, being able to give back, that's really important. You know, one of the highlights of, of my 50 years was when we had the Bee Gees in town, just before they did Saturday Night Fever, and they came into San Francisco, and I asked them to sing Christmas carols up at Children's Hospital on Petrerro. And Barry Gibb said, "Sure, mate." And he took, he took the Bee Gees, he's the only one left, actually, uh, unfortunately, and we went up to the Children's Hospital, and to see the look on the children's faces when, can you imagine the Bee Gees singing Christmas carols? And I mean, it was just, just, just a wonderful thing that, 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 Jesus, very few people would have the opportunity, and that's what this business has given me. And I want to thank, uh, thank you all for showing up, and appreciate it.
Jeffrey, you're no stranger to standing ovations, that's why this house is so filled this evening, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is the Youth Commission Work Plan Presentation, and the Parks and Recreation Supervisor Megan Sullivan will introduce our speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Megan Sullivan, I'm the Division Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm also the Staff Liaison for the Youth Commission, and so I am honored to be here tonight to introduce Commissioner Eric Cortez, who's going to tell you all the wonderful work that the Youth Commission has been doing, so I'm going to turn it over to Eric.
Good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Eric Cortez, and I'm the Chairperson of the City of Fairfield Youth Commission, and I'm here today to present you with the Commission's Work Plan. So, without further ado, here, uh, you see that the Commission transitioned from the Police Department with the Police Activities League to the Parks and Recreation Department, and these are some pictures at us at our retreat. Because we had a mix of veterans and new commissioners, at the time, we needed to review policies and establish the goals for the year. So what we did is, we planned a retreat, and we carried it out in July. And, uh, what was great was that during the retreat, uh, each commissioner sort of gravitated toward, towards their own leadership style, and from that, we had three ad hoc groups. Uh, we found that some of us are great at being the voice for Fairfield Youth, uh, others of us prefer to, uh, see service for others, and then others of us thought that creating programs and events to specifically reach out to our peers, which are the youth, was for us. Therefore, we created our ad hoc groups, as you see listed above, it's advocacy, service-based events, and activities, and meetup events. I'm so pleased to present the goals of each group that comprise a work plan, and we'll start with the Advocacy Ad hoc Group. So, one major goal is to make transportation more youth-accessible, um, to increase youth attendance and community activities and events, and we also want to provide affordable and subsidized options for this. And then, they also want to imply a variety of methods to increase visibility of the Youth Commission, and youth in general, and increase presence to great, uh, greater youth segment, including those who are Spanish-speaking. Then we have our Volunteer and Service Ad hoc Group. Here, they want to educate youth about the community's homeless issues, and provide youth with opportunities to, uh, volunteer and assist with volunteering, and community organizations engaged with homeless outreach, and a big thing here is that they want to meet with the city's Quality of Life Manager, to see what the city's efforts are, um, in helping out this issue, and identifying ways that we can help out accurately in, in the same issue. And then, they also want to partner with the community groups to provide youth with an opportunity to make the community a cleaner and greener place for everyone to live. Finally, we have our Events Ad hoc Group. Uh, so first, they want to plan and implement a free teen movie night, and in fact, they've already scheduled their first one, and that should be February 9th at Willow Hall in the Community Center. And a big thing there also is just to plan and implement an outdoor community event in general, we want to see youth getting out there, and, um, from our Youth Needs Assessment, we've seen the need for, uh, more fun things, if you will, for youth to do, and there's a lot of programs existing right now, and it's just our job to also get that information out to youth. So, here you'll see, uh, the Youth Commission's Work Plan, and, um, as a commission, we felt it was important to follow the lead of the council, and develop a plan to prioritize the work we'd like to accomplish this year of 2018. Uh, we look forward to bringing you more updates into the year, and we'll make sure to update you on an incremental basis, so thank you for having me.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Moy.
So, Councilwoman Bertani and I, um, get the pleasure of interviewing the folks who will end up on our, um, Youth Commission, and we always ask them, "So what are you, what are you going to do differently?", and we're really hoping that you'll come to the City Council more often, and tell us what you're up to, to help the youth, and give us some direction on what we need to be doing. All I have to say is, right on. Thank you so much, good job.
And let me echo my colleague Catherine Moy in saying, "Job well done," and I am very impressed, and we, as a council, I'm sure I speak for my colleagues, are very impressed with you taking our lead, that's very important, uh, because what it's resulted in is a document of accountability for the Youth Commission. You have identified, uh, priorities for your team to work on and to accomplish, and by stepping to the mic and putting that in writing, and in a PowerPoint, now you've made your commission and yourself accountable for what it is you're going to be doing in this community, and for that, I truly thank you on behalf of me and my colleagues, you're awesome, you are awesome, keep up the great work, I'm very, we're very, very proud of you, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'd like to point out, too, that Eric Cortez became an Eagle Scout, he was barely 13-years-old, and he is well on his way, and some of us think that he is presidential material, so Eric, thank, thank, thank you. Thank, please, Madam Clerk.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the City Council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council, and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, if you haven't already done so, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me prior to the time for public comment on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes, with one minute to summarize their remarks, thank you.
And our first speaker will be Sergeant Major, retired Jesse Branch, please, to be followed by Matt Rubin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, and especially the veterans. I just have a few words, I want to talk about our veterans, which is a very dear to me, being a 30-year veteran, I, it's fairly dear to me that I lost a lot of good friends during the wars, and every year at this time, I try to make it a point to get the word out, that it is our duty as Americans to support the men and women that have made it possible for us to live in a free world. Across this great country, and throughout the world, Americans pause every year on November the 11th, that will happen this Saturday, to honor the brave men and women who have honorably served our country. Let us never forget that we cannot rightfully order and celebrate without thinking of the freedom and the sacrifices that our men and women in the armed forces made. Yes, we won a lot of battles, but the fight continues. It continues with the many veterans across the country that are homeless, that are jobless, and that are fighting mental and medical disabilities. I ask you to join me and others, Americans, to take the time out of your busy schedule to thank a veteran or a member of the armed forces on November the 11th. Every year, I take part in the festivities here in Fairfield. This year, I will not be able to be a part of that festivity. I will be traveling to Southern California, where I will spend Veterans Day for the Wounded Warriors New Facility, I think that's more important than riding in the parade. So, whatever you do, and however you do it, think of the freedom you have today, it's the veterans, not the politicians, that gave you the right to freedom. So I ask you today to go out and spend a few moments, not just on November the 11th, but every day of the year, we should appreciate and thank our veterans. We must never forget, and always remember, that freedom is not free. May God bless America, each and every one of you, and especially our veterans. Thank you very much for the time that you've allowed me to talk to you. Have a great holiday. Nice salute.
Sergeant Major, happy Marine Corps birthday, 240 years. Matt Rubin, President of the PAL Board of Directors, please, Matt, to be followed by Supervisor Monica Brown, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and public at large, um, my name is Matt Rubin, I'm the President of the PAL Board, uh, for City of Fairfield Police Activities League, uh, just here to stop in tonight to thank the community, with such a full room tonight, of course, and, um, the city supporting us, the council supporting us so much through 2017. Chief Fenn, to your staff, to your people at, uh, the Police Department, you've been amazing, thank you for your support, um, Chief Velasquez, the Fire Department, the guys and gals are coming out, spending time with the, uh, the youth at the Activities League as well, and our mentors from the Police Department as well. It takes, um, a community, a village to support and to, um, help the youth, and in our city, everybody's been stepping up, with times being more difficult with fundraising, my board, which is an amazing board, I see some members in the audience tonight, um, we try and try and try, we have our hands out, we ask, we call, and to thank you all for your support. Uh, with 2018 coming upon us soon, we hope to have a successful year, serving about 450 kids, 450 kids, um, in PAL, averaging about 50 to 60 a night, depending on what treats or food we're serving, of course. We are constantly developing more and more, uh, programs, and so with the support of the folks in this room, the community, and all of you, I'm here to thank you, uh, in the month of November, thank you so much for your support, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Supervisor Monica Brown, to be followed by Nick Cabral, please.
I know it's not me, but those chairs are getting harder to get in and out of. Good morning, every, no, it isn't, oh my god, okay, let's try, it's been a long day. All right, so I'm wearing my supervisor hat today, so I'm Monica Brown, I represent District 2. So, Sassoon Parkway and Business Center, where they intersect, that debris field that blocked Interstate 80, still has not been removed. Why is that important? field that blocked Interstate 80, still has not been removed. Why is that important? Because that all then goes under the freeway into my district. So, if—I don't know who's supposed to do that. If it's the county, let me know, so I can get on them. But if it's the city, I need that debris field moved. The other is that, try to also to let you, as a reminder, Thomason Lane, part of it's the county, but part of it's the city. And so, I really would like, before the heavy rains come, that the storm drain gets cleaned out, whatever we can do to mitigate whatever the flooding, because I'm really hoping what happened last year doesn't happen again. And on a personal note, I want to thank the community. Part of my district is Green Valley, which was evacuated. Mankus Corner, Sassoon Valley, all of that. Solana Community College was the evacuation center. It was overwhelming the generosity of this community to bring everything, from food to good wishes to clothes. It was overwhelming. We had at least 100 people there, whether they slept inside or they stayed in their RVs. I cannot tell you how heartwarming it was for me as I finally made my way back from my first vacation in Disneyland in 12-years, where there was a fire down there. So, no, it wasn't me to have both sides of California catch on fire. But where I'm going with it is that we had Kaiser that had nurses and doctor, a doctor that was there. The county sent mental health personnel. And I have to give a shout-out to Deputy Sheriff Brian Travis, who went up into the hills to reassure my constituents that their homes were safe. But I have to tell you, that helicopter ride with Congressman John Guaramende, we could have been Santa Rosa. It came that close. So, for those of you who shop at the Safeway and Costco, if you look up in the hills, you see how it came over. And it was just through the grace of whomever your belief system is that it did not continue going down. So, just want to thank everybody in the entire community for helping with all of that. But if we can remember the flooding so that it doesn't happen again, thank you, guys. And good luck. I'm wearing purple because that was our tentative agreement. And I'm happy to walk. Yes.
Supervisor Brown, just wanted to share, so, a couple of things. One is, we are very
proactive in terms of responding and preparing for the flood. So, I can assure you, Public Works shared with me their roadmap for the year, and so, they're well on top of it. And then, as it pertains to Sassoon Parkway and Business Center, I'm pretty sure that's in the county. So, I know that was an area where we had trouble with last year. So, I would direct you back in that direction.
Beg your pardon?
I think the Sassoon Parkway Business Center area, that's county property.
Okay. Because I did talk with OES, and I said I would come here, but I definitely will get a hold of them soon. Because as long as we work together and it's taken care of, that's all I care about.
Thank you. Nick, you're on, please, to be followed by Troy Oviat, please.
Hi, everyone. This is my first time speaking. I got some clothes, but I don't have four of them. I've shared one. So, I live on Jackson Street, old downtown area, actually right next to the highway. And what goes on over there is a lot of speeding on the street. And the reason that is, is because of the highway. Specifically, coming from Ruah Vista area of Sassoon, people speed down. My house is the first house right there. I've tried to pull in my driveway, and cars won't even stop. They'll just swerve around, going the other lane. So, I'm just trying to see if there's a way we can get something figured out, you know, a rumble strip, flashing lights, something, speed bump, you know, something. Or, I've heard through a grapevine through with the neighbors that the off-ramp, on-ramp was only temporary and was going to be disappearing at some point. They said it was supposedly in a couple of years. I don't know how true that is. But it'd be nice to get that fixed. From the area I grew up in, I'm actually from Napa. I'm a local from Napa. The only reason something got fixed was because a cop hit a kid. And I really don't want to see that to happen. So, the other photos that you guys got were from the flooding last year. Right next to me, where Illinois used to go through before they put the highway in, there's two courts. The court, right specifically by my house, floods. And one of the photos, I don't know if you guys can see it, is just a bunch of mud that's stuck in the storm drain. When that flooded last year, I had over eight inches of water just in my backyard. So, it'd be nice to get that fixed, too. And also, so, this storm drain that I showed you guys that were in the court is also connected to the drain on Jackson Street. So, all the water from the runoff of the highway just piles up there. And so, what happens is, in the wintertime, it doesn't get shut down when it probably should. And trucks, and last year, a BMW thought it'd be smart to go really fast through there. Well, he stalled out right in the middle. At one point, we had flood signs out. They would fall down. I'd go back out, put them back up. They'd just keep falling down. So, if there's a way we can get that fixed, that'd be amazing. And there's a bunch of other photos. I was going to show you guys two of garbage that was in the court. But it's kind of funny. It all got picked up this morning. But there were some pretty ugly pictures. And then also, the court this year wasn't really maintained for the tall grass. There's half the court that is kind of has residential. The other half doesn't. I don't know if it's Caltrans property or if it's city property. But that half doesn't get—this year didn't get maintained. Fourth of July happened. Last year, they maintained it before Fourth of July. This year, they didn't. There happened to be a grass fire on the side of the highway right there from Sassoon. I don't know if it was from the fireworks over there, or if it was from some other people on our side. But it got close to the house. Got kind of nervous. In fact, there's a section that's only dividing my house from that property, from where Illinois would be. It's just a sidewalk. And my own insurance company said they wouldn't insure me unless somebody went out there and cut it. And I go out there every spring and mow it once a week.
And would you conclude, please?
Sure.
Any other comments?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Could—the City Manager, could you please make sure that somebody connects with the resident to ensure that everything's taken care of that needs to be? Thank you. So, if you can stand by until—okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
And our next speaker will be Troy Oviat, please, to be followed by Tim Gory. Troy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and the public at large. I am Troy Oviat, and I have been asked to speak tonight as one voice representing the entire Fairfield Labor Council. The Fairfield Labor Council consists of the following bargaining units within the city: the Fairfield Employees Association, Fairfield Police Officers Association, Fairfield Police Managers Association, Fairfield Professional Firefighters Association, Fairfield Fire Managers Association, and the Fairfield General Managers Association. As you can see in the crowd, many members of the Fairfield Labor Council are here tonight representing all of these associations. The Fairfield Labor Council was formed a few years ago when we recognized how much more each of our associations could accomplish working together alongside the community than working independently of each other. The Fairfield Labor Council allows all of the associations to work in unison to give back to the community we serve. Some of the accomplishments of the Fairfield Labor Council include donating over 1,000 turkeys for Thanksgiving to Fairfield residents in need, supporting the Police Activities League, delivering Christmas presents to children in need, supporting Eleven, working closely with many local churches, including St. Stevens Church and Pastor Isom, supporting Earth Day, participating in the backpack giveaway at the Fairfield-Sassoon Back-to-School Resource Fair, donating to Mission Samoa and Pastor Jen Ahu, and supporting the extension of Measure P. The individual employees that make up the Fairfield Labor Council have spent many hours volunteering alongside their families to give back to the community we serve. The mentioned accomplishments are just the beginning of what the Fairfield Labor Council envisions accomplishing in tandem with the business community, the senior citizens, and the youth of Fairfield. And the Fairfield Labor Council's vision includes endorsing initiatives that are good for Fairfield as a whole. The Fairfield Labor Council understands that running a city this size and managing the employees of this city could be overwhelming at times. But employee relations is a priority to us and was one of the City Council's top priorities. To focus on employee relations, in October 2016, the Fairfield Labor Council met with the City Manager to initiate conversations for upcoming contract negotiations. For the past five years, the associations of the Fairfield Labor Council had single-year contracts and were constantly at the bargaining table and concession bargaining due to the instability of the economy. During the meeting, the unified message from the Fairfield Labor Council was stability. We explained that all employees deserved a stable contract so they could plan long-term for themselves and their families, and the city could plan for its future. All city association contracts expired July 1st, 2017. When negotiations began, the City of Fairfield hired an attorney to represent the city. However, this attorney was unaware of the past concessions given up by these associations. There was no compassion at the bargaining table to what the employees endured or gave when the city needed it most. To compound this issue, in the middle of the bargaining process, the city inserted a new human resources director who had no history with Fairfield or the ongoing negotiations. This resulted in the most cumbersome and unproductive negotiations that members can remember. These circumstances frustrated the process and forced the associations of the Fairfield Labor Council to share their concerns with the City Council, leaving the City Council in untenable—in an untenable position. The Fairfield Labor Council respectfully requests the City Council take immediate action tonight and direct city staff to sit down with the remaining associations still in negotiations. With City Council readily available so that decisions can be made and we can conclude contract negotiations, this will allow the Fairfield Labor Council and the city to again focus their efforts to the deserving community we serve. Thank you for letting me speak tonight on behalf of the Fairfield Labor Council.
And thank you for representing the Labor Council. Thank you very much. And our next speaker. Tim Gory, please, to be followed by Richard Battersby.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, it's very nice to see you tonight. My name's Tim Gory. I'm the Executive Director of Administrative Services and Community Engagement for Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District. And I'm here on behalf of our Superintendent Chris Corey, who is sick tonight. She—otherwise, she would definitely be here. And I'm bringing a proclamation of appreciation for you and for the workers and the departments involved in the city. And so, I'd like to just read this, because I think it pretty much says it all. And this is how we feel from our school district to you. Whereas the Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District strives to maintain positive community relations by working with local businesses, agencies, organizations, and community members to create partnerships. And whereas the district is aware that the City of Fairfield and its departments have been strong supporters of the Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District, and whereas the district appreciates the outstanding efforts of the City of Fairfield leaders, Fire Department, Police Department, and Parks and Recreation Department to keep our area safe during the recent wildfire threat, and whereas the district is thankful that the City of Fairfield, Fire Department, Police Department, and Parks and Recreation Department invited us to participate in emergency operations center briefings and discussions, helping us to make better decisions during the recent wildfire threat, and whereas the district is grateful that the City of Fairfield and its departments regularly support and participate in pivotal school-related events, such as the Back-to-School Resource Fair that was just mentioned by Troy, and whereas the Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District desires to formally acknowledge the City of Fairfield and its departments for supporting our staff, schools, and community, now therefore, our Superintendent Chris Corey does hereby proclaim the Fairfield-Sassoon Unified School District sincere and honest gratitude to the City of Fairfield and its departments this 7th day of November 2017 in Fairfield, California. We thank you very much and sincerely for the partnership that we have with all of you. And I know you're here for a different reason, but I'm glad you're here so that I had the opportunity to read this to all of you in the room. Thank you very much for your service to us as a school district. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Tim. Richard Battersby, please, to be followed by Mr. George Gwynn.
Oh, no, you don't have to get up. That's okay.
Richard, we'll take a slight—
I sometimes have this effect on folks.
We'll take a slight break here.
That's okay.
Okay, Richard. Richard, we're ready for you, please. Appreciate your patience.
Am I on? Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor Price, City Council, staff. I'm Richard Battersby. I know a lot of times I come up here and talk about nuts and bolts. And I may talk about a nut and a bolt here in a minute. But I just—I want to take a minute to thank you, the City Council. I know what you do. It's not easy. Frequently, people don't come in here. It's the nature of the business that you're in and civil service. The people tend not to come to you when things are going right. So, you probably hear a lot of negative. And even though we don't agree on everything, I appreciate you doing what you do. I honestly don't know why you do it, but I do. I do appreciate it truly. I'm sure I speak for others. Sergeant Major Branch, got a lot of respect for him. I see him here every year. Thankful for veterans as well and all the city employees out here, even though they left. Good opportunity to thank them in their absence, even though, like I said, we sometimes argue about things. We appreciate—appreciate what goes on. We live here in Fairfield for a reason. We have choices where we live. So, thank you for that. And while I'm handing out thanks, I want to thank Public Works for painting the red curb out there on Hartford, which actually had an immediate impact, believe it or not. There's a school bus that typically parks there every morning in the no-parking zone, diesel right by my home. It's no longer there. So, appreciate that. Thanks for the commitment for the fence material, even though you were trying to tell us it might be in the right-of-way right up until the evening of the last City Council meeting. And I just find that astonishing after, you know, like you pointed out, Laura, you've been working on it for three years. In the staff report, you were working on that for three months. And even so, you were kind of feeding the City Council some information that wasn't 100% accurate. So, the other thing you said about citizens making you do your best work, that's why we're here. Like Councilmember Moy said, we all have a reason. We have a purpose. So, anyway, about the six-foot fence, we appreciate it. It's evidently going to be another six-foot fence, which is exactly what's there now. So, really don't expect that to solve the sound problem. But if you think that's the solution, we're going to go ahead and play ball with you. My concern, our concern, my wife's concern, is that any change we make to the fence, if there's ongoing noise issues, the city will now turn around and say, "Well, look, you changed the fence. That changed the circumstances." So, you know, we can't tell what the issue with the noise is because the situation has changed. That's—that still remains a concern. The Labor Council gentleman representing, he made a good point about the city bringing in an attorney during labor relations. I thought that was perhaps a common thread, because I often feel like we, I, and other citizens are met with a legal response when we're just trying to engage in a conversation. So, I don't find it unusual that others experience that. And the gentleman with the flooding, watch out whenever the city says temporary, because Oliver Road parking ride, we talk about that being a temporary lot. Understand that that could mean 10 or 20 years. So, if that's— So, if that's what means temporary, then, you know, I think maybe we need to be clear upfront.
Would you begin concluding, please?
Absolutely. And in conclusion, I just appreciate the interaction. Mr. Vice Mayor, you had some good suggestions about maybe the grand jury, district attorney, or civil attorney, so appreciate that. But even if those options get exercised, we're still going to come down here and visit you. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker then will be Mr. George Gwynn, please.
Good evening once again. I'd like to say a few words tonight about you guys really should consider seriously adopting e-Verify. You can go on the Internet. There's a group that has done a study. It's called FAIR, F-A-I-R. It's done a study on the cost to the U.S. taxpayer for illegals above what contributions are made, if any, as far as taxes. And the number they came up with for the whole country was $135 billion. And since California has a pretty good share of people that fit in that category, I think that if you guys could get some savings, it would be substantial. E-Verify program is voluntary, and it's not going to cost the city anything, and also would avoid interaction with ICE. It uses the social security database and also the Homeland Security one. And the cities of Escondido and Oceanside have already adopted that. And I think if, as Jesse Branch mentioned, you think anything about veterans, it'd be a good reason to consider this, because the way the system is now with illegals is they go to the other line against people that go through the system to become citizens here. They go through, they have a line against citizens, and they go to the other line against veterans. So, it would really be a win for you guys and also for the public if you could get people to follow law instead of making their own law and putting everybody else at the back of the line. So, anyway, I hope you're seriously considering that. Thank you very much.
George, Madam Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
And I do have one request to speak, Carden. Mr. George Gwynn, so we'll take him first. George, item number nine, please.
Good evening once again. I'm not sure exactly how much each vehicle is going to cost, but if it's like most buses, I'm thinking somewhere between half a million and $700,000 maybe. And I was just thinking, you could have a lot of taxi fares that you could pay people to use a taxi, and it would be cheaper, considering the number of people I see in the buses when I drive around Fairfield and Susun. I think the most I've ever seen is five people, and it's usually between zero and three. And you can say maybe the number of riders is going to increase, but it's been a long time that it hasn't increased. So, it seems like there should be some other alternatives. I know that diesel's a little bit cleaner than it used to be, but there's probably other options that are a lot better than even a clean diesel, because if you got that big a vehicle going around with nobody in it, it's going to be a lot bigger problem than if you had, say, a car or some other type of conveyance that wasn't spewing as much. It's like comparing a jet that goes from one country to another to somebody that's got a car. So, anyway, food for thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And colleagues, we do have a request from Richard Battersby for item number 19. So, Richard, do you want to come forward, please?
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple of quick questions for staff on item 19 about the body cameras. I was curious, what is the city's policy on use of the body cameras?
Response, please, to the city manager.
Can you clarify that, please?
Yeah.
Have a specific instance, or can you just kind of help clarify?
Yeah, just general. When are they used? When are they required to be deployed? Under what conditions are they used?
I'll let our police chief respond to that directly.
So, we have a comprehensive policy on the use of body cameras, and ultimately, there's still discretion between- or the officer still has discretion in the use of the body camera. But I'm not in a position, it's probably four pages long of policy, talking about everything from balancing the need to record evidence to protecting victims' rights and those kinds of things. So, it's a bit of a balancing act.
Okay. Are these records from body cameras available to the public?
Generally, they are considered evidence under the California PRA.
So, it is- it's a record that we could- a citizen could request via the Public Record Act?
Generally, they're considered investigatory under the PRA.
Okay. So, if it's determined that it would be appropriate to release these records to a citizen requesting, what's the approximate timeframe to be expected for receiving them?
I can't speculate, because I don't- I don't know what the- what the situation would be. We would handle, like any other PRA, we would respond in relation to the- into the law, working with the city attorney's office.
Okay. I was just curious. I know it's grant funds, but, you know, like you made the point last city council meeting, grant funds are really taxpayer dollars out there. So, these are our taxpayer dollars that are paying for these records, and there's an interest in sort of a legitimate reason in requesting them. I'm just curious how the citizen could go about obtaining a copy, and then about how long you might expect. Is it 30 days? Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days? Do you have a ballpark?
Yeah. It's tough. I can't speculate, because I don't know what type of incident it would be. Again, if it's- if it's evidence or if it's part of an investigation, then it wouldn't be released at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Come back then, entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as it has been moved by Councilwoman McCarroll, seconded by Councilwoman Moye. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you very much. We turn then to new business, please. Madam Clerk.
Item 23, Resolution 2017-258 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing the city manager to execute a design services agreement between the City of Fairfield and Harrison Associates for engineering and design services for the 2018 pavement rehabilitation project.
And Paul, welcome.
Our presenter is Paul Koschel from Public Works.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Koschel, Assistant City Engineer with Public Works. And thank you for the opportunity this evening to present this item for a design services agreement for our 2018 pavement rehab rehabilitation project. Before I go over some of the details of this particular project, we wanted to give you just a very brief overview of Public Works' pavement management program. And then also, please keep in mind that early next year, we do plan to come back to council during the council retreat to provide a more comprehensive overview of the pavement management program. So, there- we have three primary funding sources that fund our streets program. Gas tax is what we've received for many years, Measure P, which you are all aware of, and then Senate Bill 1, or SB 1, is the new funding that we're receiving starting this fiscal year. This fiscal year, we'll receive a partial funding of approximately $600,000. And then, starting next year and each year thereafter, it'll be an additional $1.9 million that can go towards funding our street program. So, these funding sources really fund two major programs that Public Works implements. One, we talked- the city manager touched on briefly, a lot of the work that our own Public Works crews, our city streets crews, perform on a daily basis, and then also our larger capital improvement program projects. So, the next couple of slides, it's just a couple of really good pictures of some of the work that our operations team implements. Here's a spot repair at St. Angelo Street. Some before and after shots really kind of show the improvement there. And then here's a couple of other paving activities that our streets crews implement to help extend the life cycle of our pavements, trench paving there on the left, and crack And then we come to our capital improvement program. In 2017 and 18, we really have three major street capital projects. Two of them are focused on our residential neighborhoods, and then the third is going to be an opportunity to really tackle some of our arterial and collector roadways. So, the 2017 residential seal coat project, there's a couple of pictures from that project. That one's substantially complete, just some minor punch list items remaining on that And then here's an overview of that essentially five-year program you can make out there in the lavender or light purple. That's the 2017 project that's just wrapped up. And then the light blue is our 2018 project, and that's going to wrap up our residential seal coat program. And then the additional funding that I talked about earlier is going to allow us to do an additional major pavement project next year, and that's going to be able to address some of our arterial and collector roadways. This exhibit shows some of the street segments that we'd like to address over the next few years. And then in 2018, the focus is going to be on kind of the bottom left-hand corner there in the Cordelia area. So, this slide kind of zooms in on that area there in Cordelia. And what we did is, for this larger project with all the other work that we have going on, we really need the expertise of an engineering firm to help us put together the construction documents for this project. So, staff met with Harrison Associates. They're out of Concord, and they do a lot of this work for a lot of different agencies in the Bay Area and throughout California. So, you can see the numbers there for, we split the contract out, the scope for the pavement design, and then split out the traffic signal design. We're going to be, as we're looking of the- as we get into the design, we're going to be looking at the signalized intersections within the project limits and taking the opportunity to see if upgrades to the traffic signal systems in those areas warrant any improvements as well. Our preliminary estimate for this scope of work is approximately $6 to $7 million. And I really kind of want to emphasize that, you know, this project, together with our 2018 seal coat project going on, but together at the same time, at times next summer, is really going to be a great thing, because it's going to be an improvement to our city streets, but it's also is going to be a major impact. You know, it's going to- there's going to be disruptions at times. There's going to be traffic issues or traffic impacts during construction. And so, we're going to be, you know, as the project progresses, we're going to be communicating and coordinating efforts with our major partners, such as the school district, to talk about schedule and look for ways to minimize impacts to the schools, as well as using different means to communicate schedule with, including press releases for the community as well as social media, such as Nextdoor and Facebook. So, here's a good picture, Pittman Road. This is within that 2018 pavement rehab project that we're going to try to address next year. This is obviously, you know, a segment of street on Pittman that's in serious- seriously poor shape, and it's one of the- one of the segments that really needs to be addressed next year. So, just to sum up, we- engineering services are required to prepare construction documents to complete this pavement rehab project next year. Harrison Associates, who we spoke with and met with, is well-qualified to perform this work, and so, staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to award the contract in the amount of $471,809 to Harrison Associates. That concludes the presentation. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. Entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2017-2... Oh, moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McCarroll. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number 24, please.
Mr. Mayor and colleagues, I will be recusing myself from this item. I'm the Executive Director of Heather House, and I will be leaving the building now.
Thank you very much. We'll take a slight break here to give you time.
I'd like to say my name is Ron Cupid. I'm president of the-
Hold a sec.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Madam Clerk, item number 24, please. If you'd introduce the item.
Heather House Presentation Regarding Strategic Plan and Funding Request.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ron Cupid. I'm president of the Interfaith Council of the Heather House Board. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. I'd like to, before we start, introduce the members of the board who decided to attend tonight's meeting. I have Lucretia, James, Mark, and Kathy. We come to you tonight to present our overall strategic plan. We didn't want to give- go through the whole strategic plan, but this series of slides is going to kind of be an overview of what we plan to do as far as bringing Heather House back to- back to compliance and knowledge to be a care home, a care shelter for the homeless in Fairfield.
And so, my name is Ashini Nataradra, and I'm the Case and Operations Manager for Heather House. And in this first slide, we just wanted to show you some of the children that we've served between last year and this year, just to note that these are investments in our community. These are children who live in our community and need to be sheltered, and even more so now when it's getting colder. And so, we just wanted to share those beautiful faces with you as well.
This next slide shows a little hysterical look back at the evolution of Heather House. We have the Interfaith Council of Solon County. Heather House was established in 2001. Purpose of Heather House is women and children's shelter. It has 24 beds, and we've served over 6,000 clients since 2001. The program concept is to help single homeless women and families reach self-sufficiency. The program is dedicated to helping single women, as I mentioned before, and families reach self-sufficiency after suffering from homelessness. We have a 90-day work program, which provides case management, weekly and basic life skill workshops twice a week. We require the clients to also participate in regular chores and have zero tolerance for drugs and alcohol. Okay, next slide, please. We also have the transitional- The executive director for, well, for 10 years was Linda Mahoney, and when she had it, there was a multiple faith community partners.
Excuse me, is the microphone on?
Oh. Let's speak a little closer. Okay, we have years of community support. One of our main community supporters over time has been KI Jones Elementary School. They've been with us since 2001, bringing in toiletries and cleaning supplies over to Heather House, which is greatly needed at times.
And so what I'll do is I'll speak to you about Heather House today. So Heather House today, it still has oversight by the Interfaith Council of Solana County. We still serve homeless families and children in the 24-bed shelter, which is what we're here requesting emergency funds for. We also have a respite program. That's six beds that are to serve chronically homeless individuals with chronic mental health conditions. We also have the three-bedroom home that we have changed to use for transitional housing, and that's currently under needed repairs. And our previous board member, our previous vice president was Kat Moy, who stepped up to serve as Executive Director in May 2016. And so I also want to go over what our losses were. Councilwoman Pat Bertani asked us why, what happened, and so this is a breakdown of what happened. And we had several losses that, that affected the emergency shelter. So our first transition as far as Executive Director was in 2013, when we transitioned from a successful founding Executive Director, Linda Mahoney, to a new Executive Director, Samina Masood. During that transition, we had board member turnover under the Executive Director, Masood. We also had a drop in community engagement and collaboration as far as fundraisers and volunteers. We also had and currently have legal expenses that continue to accrue for a lawsuit that was filed by an employee under Executive Director Masood. And in April of 2016, Executive Director Masood left suddenly. At that time, Kat Moy, board vice president of the Interfaith Council of Solana County, was appointed as acting Executive Director, and Ms. Moy is currently navigating the transition and rebuilding efforts. We also had a loss of website access, mailing list, and social media content upon Executive Director Masood's departure. We had to start from scratch when we went through that transition with a new website, new social media, new mailing list. We also had a loss of grant funds and a funding hold, specifically CDBG funds, because of our risk having that transition from the Executive Director. We had loss of HUD funding as well for non-compliance with federal housing first mandate, and there was a closure of our transitional home due to failure of major sewer lines. And so we have a funding request from the, for the council today from Heather House. So Heather House requests funding from the City of Fairfield to ensure the continuation of the shelter and basic life skills for our community's women and children in the emergency shelter. Our funding request consists of one-time immediate payment of $75,000 and $50,000 annually for five years. Our request for immediate $75,000 is outlined in the slide, some of the needs that we have. It's to pay outstanding bills, including CPA billing, so the required audit can be completed. We need that audit to apply for upcoming grants. It also allows beds to be occupied immediately in the emergency shelter. Funds allow the bed occupancy to continue over the winter and into the spring. It provides financial stability until expected grant funds are released, and funds will not be used for payment of legal fees, and funds will not be used for payment of the Executive Director Kat Moy. Our other requests that we would like you to consider at a later time is a request of $50,000 annually for five years, and this will allow time for us to stabilize funding streams and allow Heather House, Heather House to hire needed staff to reach effective organization capacity. We also have some contract changes that we'd like to request for a later time as well. Heather House additionally requests the current contracts with the City of Fairfield to be updated. We'd like to ensure contract language is consistent with other city contracts in which the city is responsible for major repairs and maintenance, such as the roofs, AC units, and aging plumbing. We'd also ask that you allow Heather House subletting rights to another nonprofit organization that focuses on homelessness, serving as a permanent supportive housing program. And our strategic plan has this timeline in it, and I'd just like to point to you in this slide, the reason why we need that immediate $75,000. So if you look in July of 2018, that's when most grant fundings are released. So we've started to apply for grants starting this month, and, but unfortunately, those funds are only released July 2018, which is why we even more so need $75,000 immediately to carry us out until we can get those funds released. So that's why it is, it's really urgent at this time. And then for grant funding plans, so we have already recruited a volunteer grant writer. We also, as suggested by Councilman Rick Bakar and Supervisor James Sparing, we did have a meeting with Shelter Inc., and we are going to be looking to them for grant advisory, and also suggested by Councilman Chuck Tim as well. So we will be speaking to them as far as getting grant writing advisory from them. We also are going to be utilizing Solana County Nonprofit Foundation for resources to research additional grant funds, and we have already identified 12 non-governmental funds, grants for which we are going to be applying. And I'll have Board President Ron Cupid speak on fundraising.
As mentioned before, part of the trouble was that the former ED reduced the amount of fundraising activities for Heather House. She opted us out of the Bunko fundraiser. I won't give you specific dollars and details of what that would raise, but it's just the factor of community awareness that this gives for Heather House being part of the fundraising in the community, just our name getting out there. Taste of Solano. This is a grand event that we are very proud to always sponsor, the Rancho Solano. It's a good event. We had a great 2016 event. Due to lawsuit concerns, we elected not to have that event, Taste of Solano, this year. We're looking forward to 2018 to start it up again. Turkey Trot. We were once again dropped from the Turkey Trot. It was very good activity, working with other nonprofit organizations. We received part of the funds for that, and once again, more community awareness for Heather House being in those, those type of operations. Church Campaigns. Well, we looking forward to the churches to assist donations from the churches, working with the churches on any of their projects, any of their fundraising, you know, projects. We may not receive the funds for that, but at least we can be there to help participate. And Giving Campaigns. Okay. To the community and those who showed up tonight, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out to hear what we have to say about Heather House. We're grateful to the community. The community's kept Heather House going, and we're, our doors are open to you to come visit Heather House and see what the operations are there. We've implemented necessary checks and balances in our policies and procedures manuals so that this will never happen again, what, what happened with the mistakes of the past. We will not have those happen again with what was instituted. Once again, we request your continued support and prayer to keep Heather House operations going. Okay. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider helping Heather House survive so we can continue helping homeless neighbors get off, get off of the streets of Fairfield and into permanent housing. Without your help, the shelter will have to close its doors. And, you know, we're looking at that, that timeframe is very, very short if we cannot receive assistance with funding.
And just one more comment. We currently do have a mom in the shelter who is soon to exit, and she wanted to be here to, to voice how the shelter has helped her, but I believe there is a letter included in the strategic plan that we sent earlier from her that I hope you have taken the time to read as well, her words, and that's all. Thank you very much for listening and also for just considering us. Thank you.
You may want to stand by. Are there any comments or questions?
I have some comments.
Councilman Bakar, if you would, please.
But is, are there any public people that want to speak here?
I have, I have one.
Just one? Why don't we listen to that person, then? Then I'd like to make some comments.
Rita Jones, please, if you would come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There you go, Rita.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Rita Jones. I'm the Deacon Treasurer for Rockville Presbyterian Fellowship Church, and I've been working with Heather House for a while. And one thing I wanted to say, I was going to write something down, and then I decided to speak from my heart. I never planned on ever being homeless, never thought it would ever happen to me, but the wildfire was so close to my house, and I had just a limited amount of time to get a few things and leave my home. I was fortunate enough to have a place to go, but the uncertainty for the week that I spent not knowing if my house was going to be there, the things that I couldn't take with me, just knowing, just having that feeling, and now every time I smell smoke, that all comes back. So I can't imagine what it's like for these people that are homeless, have nowhere to go, and we have the power to help them. You people could help them. And that's so important because I've been to Heather House, I've seen the success rate, I've seen how it operates. They do not have a closed-door policy to me. I've never had them turn me away, and I think that what we have to look at is that they, when they're, when they go through this program and they're ready to go out on their own, it's so gratifying to know that we, as a community, accomplished that by helping Heather House. So I just urge you from the bottom of my heart to do whatever you can to help them, to stay open, because when I went there the other day and saw all the empty beds because they couldn't shelter them, all I could think of was all these women and, and children that are out there at this time of year, and knowing what I went through, and I had a place to go. So there, I had a light at the end of the tunnel. I knew I had insurance. I knew things were going to work out. I didn't like what I thought might happen to me, but with these people, they go into Heather House, they have that light at the end of the tunnel. So if you could just do what you can and help them, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Councilman Bakar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rita. Well, first of all, I, I just wanted to say that I want to thank everybody who's here, you know, from Heather House. I know that Heather House has a long history in the city. I know some of my family members actually had volunteered there in the past. I know the brand Heather House actually has a positive ring to it among many people in Fairfield, so I just wanted to put that out there. I think a couple, I just wanted to say one thing, Sheeney, I think there's a misconception about the grant writing advisory, okay? I don't think Shelter and, City Manager White, correct me if I'm wrong, okay, because you were at that meeting too. I don't think Shelter Incorporated really has a grant advisory idea to do that. I think actually that's an organization that actually runs facilities, okay, because we actually went to visit them, and they were there to see the facility, so I just wanted to put that out there, okay? How many people reside in Heather House right now? How many people are there right now?
We have about nine residents right now.
Nine right now? Okay, and how many would it be capable of?
Up to, I would say, 34.
Okay. So, and, so what I, here's, when we took a tour the other day, actually, I was on that tour with City Manager David White, Supervisor Sparing, members, some staff members from the county, staff member from the city, and the one thing that, that I saw that I think really needs to be done, okay, before we can even talk about funding right now, is I really think there needs to be a facilities assessment of that building. I mean, I was really surprised at the condition of the building overall. I think people are working really hard to try to keep that place going, but my concern is safety too, within that facility. And like I said, I want to give credit to people who are working there, you, Sheeney, of course, and, you know, our executive director there and other people, but I really do feel like it, it, right now, it's a safety issue there because of that facility. As far as the people that are there, if for some reason, you know, you couldn't do it right now, I think we talked about the fact that we would be able to, you know, find a place for the people that are there right now. I mean, nine people aren't that many, there were, we couldn't, the city and the county could not put their, you know, heads together to find, you know, a place for them right now. And I also think, you know, from the facilities assessment, and I'll ask the city attorney this, you know, I don't know, maybe, you know, what options do we have depending on what happens with the facility assessment with Heather House?
Well, I think we'd have to see what that, what that report shows, if, whether or not there are any health or safety issues or not, so that would be the thing we'd have to take a look at.
And I, you know, and I, and I really, I mean, care for the residents. I mean, people who know my own background know that I've worked with at-risk kids for years and at-risk families for years and did many home visits throughout Fairfield for a long time. So I'm, my concern is pretty deep for these people. But my concern also, though, is the facility itself right now. I mean, I really have a, you know, I really think there needs to be an assessment of the, of the safety there and the physical plant itself. And also, you know, we talked about, you know, professional case management and other things involved too that really needs to be done at Heather House to make it a real viable option for people that don't have a home to go to. And I know, like I said, I know there's a long history here in Fairfield, Heather House. It does have a positive brand, but I think right now, obviously, and through no fault of anybody here in this room, I know that, you know, that, that there's been some real issues over the last, you know, year or two, so that would be my suggestion, but...
I can't, I can't say this, so as far as any major repairs that need to be made, the biggest...
families for years and did many home visits throughout Fairfield for a long time. Um, so I'm, my concern is pretty deep for these people. But my concern also though is the facility itself right now. I mean, I, I really have a, you know, I really think there needs to be an assessment of the, of the safety there and the physical plant itself. And also, um, you know, we talked about, um, you know, professional case management and other things involved too, that really needs to be done at Heather House to make it a real viable option for people that don't have a home to go to. And I know, like I said, I know there's a long history here in Fairfield, Heather House. It does have a positive brand, but I think right now, obviously, and, and through no fault of anybody here in this room, I know that, you know, that, that there's been some real issues over the last, you know, year or two. So that would be my suggestion, but...
I can't, I can't say this. So as far as any major repairs that need to be made, the biggest problem was the house on seven ten Ohio. That was the only major repair we needed. And we were fortunate to get, uh, a grant to repair that side. Other than that, we haven't had any major repair needs, but it is a concern for us as well.
Okay.
And I would also say, as a part of our strategic plan, um, we have talked about, uh, in our strategic plan, also hiring case managers and what their background should be, what their education should be within the strategic plan.
I'm just concerned about the amount of money and is that even enough right now at all? So, I mean, that's just my, I mean, my suggestion would be to do an assessment.
Well, Councilman, I'd like...
Carol, I have a question. When you say the facilities, you mean the main building or the twenty-foot bed?
All, yes, yes.
We, could we request that the city give us an inspection at cost to find out exactly what physical errors we have in buildings?
City manager?
I'd want to get together with staff to see what resources we could bring in-house between our public work side and community development side and see if we had the capacity to do it on our own. If not, we'd seek some kind of third-party help. But I just need to step back and look to see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Vicaro, I'm really pleased that you were able to participate in that tour. And I had an opportunity to spend a bit of time with supervisor Spiering going over some of these concerns. But I'd like to hear from my other colleagues too, please.
Yeah.
I have serious concerns about the financial situation. There's no question that the need exists now. No question at all about that. But I'm concerned about the finances. Tony, please.
I would like to just, uh, number one, say thank you for your presentation and for having the heart, uh, for caring for our folks who are in need in Fairfield. We appreciate you and we need you. I'd like to follow up just a little bit on the physical state of the building. That's concerning. Now, I haven't been to the facility in quite a while, so I'm concerned with council member Vicaro's questions regarding the infrastructure there. I mean, when is the last time the, the shelter, so let me ask it this way. Is the shelter in compliance with whatever applicable rules there are for that facility?
I, I cannot answer that. I don't know. I have to have the experts come in who are building inspectors to come in and give us those write-ups. I mean, we had, luckily last year, James Howard, High Tower, Promifland Church came in and did a beautiful job of refurbishing the twenty-four bed facility, um, painting, new toilets, some electrical work, repairing the playground area that was mud practically, putting in new, um, compost, rubber compost, gives a plan. So we had that kind of work, but it wasn't, you know, sanctioned by the city. This was a volunteer effort from the Promifland Church.
Understood. Let me ask though, are there rules and regulations or regulations in place with which the facility must comply on a regular basis? Like are there guidelines, Mr. City Attorney, maybe you can help me. Are there, are there guidelines that would need to be in compliance with for the facility to be operational?
Well, first of all, you just have all the, uh, the building code requirements that would be required for that type of occupancy.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any other licensing requirements that they need to go through outside with the state, but, uh, the fundamental thing would be compliance with, uh, city health and safety requirements for the building itself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So is the facility, the, the, the shelter in compliance with the health and safety code regulations that are applicable, the building code regulations that are applicable?
I believe we are, but I can also look more into that. I know we just had our lease extended and I, I'm pretty sure, I know executive director Kat Moy probably did a really good job of reading through that lease and making sure we're up to compliance with our lease for the city. Um, and I do know that she also, um, made sure we had someone from the fire department also walk through. So we make sure we have, uh, our fire extinguishers as far as that is safety. Uh, those are updated every year. Um, and we do have an exit strategy if there's an emergency, um, but we can, we can look more into that, definitely.
I think that's definitely warranted. I think it's a good point because of the amount of financial aid that's being requested. I think it's first very important for us, all of us, for obvious reasons, to know that the building is in compliance with existing code regulations.
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. City Manager, you're going to attempt to put a team together to assess the city's ability to conduct the compliant, code compliance evaluation assessment?
Yes. I think if I understand what the request is being made is that you would want us to have a team look at whether, and assess whether or not the facility's in compliance with applicable code and health and safety code and building code for a facility of that nature. And that's an assessment I would look to see if our staff could do. If they couldn't do it, I'd let you know that, but I'm hopeful that we could do a, an analysis with what we have.
Good. And do you have a timeframe for doing that?
Uh, not off the top of my head, no. Let me get back with, uh, department heads and staff and get back to you on a specific timeframe. I don't, I'm not prepared to give you one right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just on another note, I go back a long way with the Heather House. And so do you all. And I remember the Heather House under the excellent leadership of Linda Mahoney. And she really left a finely tuned machine there is what I thought. The Heather House was a, has a great brand, like you said, but really was financially vibrant. The Taste of Solano, gigantic fundraiser, successful year after year after year, the turkey trot, et cetera. So what concerns me is what happened. I mean, so I know things happen, personnel changes, but it's gone from that model that was working tremendously well, in my opinion, to where it is now. And like my colleague said, Vicaro, uh, uh, you know, I, I guess to no fault of anyone in the room, but what I want to know is what do you have in place, number one, to ensure that whatever happened does not happen again, right? And number two, to become financially self-sustained, like pretty much you were when Linda Mahoney signed off and resigned. And I, and I just ask these questions because you're asking the council to allocate taxpayer money, basically, right, for, and a lot of it, over three hundred thousand dollars. And we need to be assured that that investment is one that will pay dividends in terms of service to the community. So we've seen the Heather House go from the Linda Mahoney model to what it is now. And, you know, obviously a lot went on between those two points in time. I, I just want to know what it is you have in place to make sure that this doesn't happen again. We, that, that you've put, that you've put checks and balances in place to make sure that, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but whatever happened, that it doesn't happen again.
I can say... I can say that, um, you know, as far as monies, checks and balances on who was responsible, signing, uh, a, a credible party to be assigned for the money raised, donations given, to follow up with the ED more consistently, that we are not losing grants and what is the status of the grants and why are we not receiving those grants. That's what happened. Basically, we lost a lot of the funding through not receiving the grants. It was asked at that time, what's going on, what is happening? And the answers were such at a state that, you know, it's, it's gonna be followed up and it wasn't. And so that's a loss of quite a significant, uh, sum of the monies that we had coming in. Like I said, this, this gonna be, uh, this in policies and procedures on how to follow up. Our meetings, we're gonna have reports on those grants, where they're at, what's in the bank, who's following up on it, you know, reports of treasury reports of, of how much money do we have, what was spent, why was it spent, as of, you know, uh, needs that just pop up, you know, rainy day needs that weren't, weren't budgeted. We intend to follow up the budget at monthly meetings of what was spent. Was it spent on what the strategic plan specifically addressed? And if not, why not? What was the cause for this not happening? That's all I can really say. And I know it was just taxpayer money. It's money that, you know, we're asking for. It's not like, you know, we're coming out of, out, it's, it's like if you have it coming out of your pocket, you want to know where is this money going?
Absolutely. And is it a good investment in the first place?
Is Heather House a good investment?
Well, we know that, that the Heather House model works, but the point is, you know, we need to be making sure that we're investing in an entity that will be viable for its intended purpose, which it is not right now, because you've got so many empty beds that are, they're, they're available and they should be in service, but service is not possible because of the funding crunch.
Right.
Right.
We're not making enough money to, basically pay the bills for those extra folks who would be there. You know, if it was eighteen, we're gonna have, we've cut back out, you know, we'll cut back on funds to only, uh, have nine. And still have problems.
So what's to ensure the Heather House won't be back in a year asking for an additional emergency seventy-five thousand dollars?
I can say that, you know, offhand, it, it's, you know, I can talk at a board meeting about it, that we come to the city council meetings and say, hey, this is where we're at. And maybe put up a, a slide of money spent on a quarterly basis or a monthly basis. Sheen?
So, um, one of the biggest things is we don't have a current grant writer. And that has hindered us from HUD funding, uh, in the way we were writing grants. And from that transition before two thousand sixteen, we had HUD funding. And when that transition took place in our grant writing, what happened was we didn't have that HUD, HUD funding because of the wording of our grants. That was a big funding loss for the shelter. We do have funding for the respite program. That's a county grant that we have active, that we've maintained and we've grown from four beds to six beds and hopefully eight beds. We're trying to grow that program. And that's a successful program. Uh, our transitional house was successful before the plumbing backfired on us. So we had galvanized plumbing. Uh, for the emergency shelter, we had CDBG funding, first five funding, and we had FEMA funding. Uh, the biggest, uh, problem was for first five, we missed an application cycle when the last ED left. And that dropped us from that funding. Uh, for FEMA, in our application, it was our wording that dropped us from because of housing first. Um, and for CDBG, it was a communication, a miscommunication, uh, that we had between Heather House and, um, the grant lead for CDBG. So those are things that could have been avoided, definitely. And it's something, those are things that we're working on. The biggest thing is we're trying to do three fundraisers now yearly instead of just one, which was a big change that came about under their last ED, only doing one fundraiser, which was not something that Heather House did. It was usually three fundraisers. The other thing is we have a volunteer grant writer. Um, and so what we're looking for is to get those funding streams stabilized again. We had those funding streams, but in this last year from two thousand and sixteen, that's when we had a huge drop in funding. So it was something that, yes, could have been avoided, but unfortunately, we had unforeseen circumstances. And I do believe that Heather House can continue and be successful and will not need to continue to rely, uh, on city funding. This is an emergency situation.
Thank you.
Councilman Vicaro?
Just one quick question, Mayor. Um, who, who's your board treasurer right now?
What treasurer?
Do you have a treasurer?
Right now, we are working the procedure of, of getting a board treasurer to that position. We're going to elect a board treasurer.
So who?
We're defining, right now, we are defining that position to make sure that, that, that position will follow up and we won't have any issues as, like we had before as far as the definition of what that board treasurer will do and what he's responsible for.
So before, okay, so when you did have some funding, who was responsible for the money?
Well, we allowed the, uh, the ED and the accounting firm, we're more or less overseeing a lot of the funds, which we came back and said that, that cannot be that way.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
It's Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Ron, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna look at it maybe from a little different perspective. I'm gonna look at it as it's business to the city. All right? And I certainly don't mean any offense. Uh, you, you house bodies, bodies that are in need. Um, I look at it and similar business to, um, say Paradise Valley, uh, that run our Legends, our, our restaurants. City-owned businesses, city-owned property, right? And, uh, you want the city to fix the buildings, right? And this is what Rick Vicaro was alluding to, is that we need a facilities inspection because we don't know what's wrong. But it looks like in the paperwork that the, the sewer's bad and, and it looks like four buildings, two apartments, a house, you know, from, from the addresses, three eleven, three fifteen Jefferson, and then seven ten and seven twenty-four Ohio Street, correct? And I haven't been there in a couple of years, but I, I, I remember it vaguely. I wanted to go last week, but due to circumstances beyond our control, it didn't work out. Um, you guys changed your business model. When you went from housing first, or have you ever been housing first? Have you always been emergency sheltering? Do you know? It's not a trick question because I, I truly don't know. And the reason I ask this is it changed your HUD funding requirements, correct? Which means you lost the grant as soon as that you went from the, you went from the housing first model, right?
So we...
No?
So...
I'm curious because did you ever have HUD, FUD, HUD, HUD funding?
Yes. So we have had HUD funding.
Okay.
We had FEMA funding.
Right.
Uh, and in our reapplication to grants, um, we specified what our program was and they considered us not housing first.
Correct. So that's when they, then you didn't qualify for the grants that you had qualified for earlier, right? Did you change your business model or was there always a communication or not that clearly, not the, the grants were that clearly stated?
I believe, I, I was under the impression, I was under the impression that the housing first model had changed from what concerning the drug and alcohol policy.
Right.
And so, being that we were not going to be in compliance or comply with their drugs and alcohol policy, we wouldn't be, be eligible to receive those grants.
Correct. That, well, that, and I, I guess that's probably what I'm driving at as well is that knowing that you couldn't receive the grants, was there another mechanism, funding mechanism or funding stream that you guys considered in lieu of those grants?
Yes, definitely. So...
What were those?
First Five has contributed to Heather House for years. Uh, that is someone we reached out to a couple of months ago, the executive director of First Five, to continue that relationship, to let her know that we're reapplying for First Five. Uh, there's also CDBG funding. Uh, we've also gotten Kaiser grants in the past. Um, and I believe a Bank of America grant as well before in the past. So we've had funding streams that were not HUD funding in the past.
Okay. Because in, in the, the big concern, and I'm sure the mayor's concerned, probably everybody's concerned, is that it's a lot of money. And I would expect you to start fund, fundraising now.
We have.
And...
Yes.
The Taste of Solano, well, I don't know what you're gonna call it, or the turkey trot or whatever, but you're going through your churches, the community. Um, I had a chance in the last month or two to talk to, uh, Jody Williams from heart to heart. And they deal with termed-out foster children. and they deal with termed-out foster children, and they are actually looking, they have about 175 or 180 kids, and at any one time, there's probably 10 or 12 that are homeless a night. And I actually talked to City Manager, I talked to Supervisor Sperring and, and Rick Vaccaro. They can actually pay, but I mean, as you, as you reach out for partnerships, because I'm, I'm a little reticent about, if I give you, if I vote to give you $75,000 now and $50,000 a year, I don't even know where that money, where that number came from. Does that, does that make sense? I don't know how you came to that number, because I look how much you are in arrears and how much it costs, and you're talking about bringing on somebody else. That's not enough money. And I don't want to set you up for failure, nor do I want to spend taxpayer dollars if the building is falling down and there's not a business plan, like Pam Bertani said, that'll keep us out of this same predicament in six months or a year from now. And that's probably what I'm, I'm looking for, because I believe in what you do. People actually need shelter, and whether it's housing first or, you know, a, a different kind where, you know, you got to be clean and sober. I'm okay with that. I mean, that's, that's your business and your model, but when it's our money, and from a business point of view, that's probably where I'm coming from. Does that, does that make sense? You, you see my dilemma, I guess?
We, what we can do is do a better breakdown of the budget, if that is a concern. It sounds like that's a concern in the budget that we added to the strategic plan, that maybe it didn't clarify exactly what those funds are for in detail. We could add more detail for you.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean to interrupt you. That's very important. Number one is where are you going to get the money, and two, how much money you, you think you're actually going to need. Because in looking at this, it's $75,000 now and then $50,000 a year. How much are you going to match? How much are you planning on fundraising? Probably back in the day, you guys were well over half a million dollars, $750,000 back in the day?
Back in the day, we were in more closer to maybe $300,000. In Linda Mahoney's days, I think that would be more.
Okay.
That would hold.
But I'm, I'm with, I'm with Mr. Vaccaro. The first thing that I would want to see is, is this, are these buildings even habitable? And if they are, or they're not, how much it's going to cost? And then a breakdown, and like I said, from a business model, if I got to spend $125,000 a year for five or six people, that, no, 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 that's better off putting them in a hotel. So, you can see what I mean.
Sure.
And that maybe can guide you where you, where I'd like for you to go as far as how much money you honestly think it'll take and what you're going to do with the money and where you're going to get the rest of the money from. But I appreciate sincerely what you do, and especially holidays coming, it's cold, and God bless you. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. The situation is dire, and it's dire not because the weather is changing, but because there have been problems over the years. So, before I can even consider using tax dollars, I need to be assured that there is a complete assessment, and I think the city will take the lead on that when, on the physical conditions and all those repairs. The partnership between the city and Solano County is a very key one, and I'm hoping, I know just a little bit about Shelter, Inc., but I'm hoping there are some models there that would allow your board, Mr. President, to put together a plan that you could take to a banker, and a banker would look at everything and decide whether or not this is worth funding. We don't have much time, so we need to get busy on it right now, and I need to know more about the funding requests that you have now.
Okay.
The first thing is to get the house in good shape, so it is habitable and it is safe. The overriding issue, though, is you may have to take a look at your 16-year history and determine from a therapeutic point of view where things began to change, where it became in the jeopardy that it's in now. So, going forward, I can say to Fairfield taxpayers, yes, they have a plan now, and this plan is going to work, but I don't have much tolerance for failure to meet guidelines for whatever grants there that you're seeking. And I'll use CDBG, for example. You know, that funding stream gets less and less each year because presidents don't like it, but communities use it very, very well, and Fairfield has a strong history of using it well. It would be difficult for me to go to see either one of our senators from California and say, here's our situation, can you help us? If I were to take the evidence I have today to Capitol Hill, I know what the response would be. You don't really have a plan yet, so you need to take a good, hard look, need to take a look at the reliable sources you do have, particularly the faith community. And one of the problems with grants, no matter how wonderful they are from Kaiser Permanente, they're usually for a specified period of time, and then they move on to another agency. And I'll use Levin as an example of that. Levin has been quite successful in providing the funding necessary to maintain those 16 centers, and they're increasing. So, that's the kind of model I'd like to see you be able to bring back to the council for us to consider before I would even, even venture to ask my colleagues to support the request. But you don't have much time, and you do need some more help. You need help with organizing your board, organizing your priorities, and have realistic plans, and take advantage of those that you do have who are standing by, willing to help. But we can't do that tonight.
I understand. Okay.
And I'd like you to be able to get that done as fast as you can, and don't be reluctant to go into the community and ask people who have the kinds of experiences that would really help you. It's an opportunity to learn, to recreate what you once had. In the meantime, there are lots of homeless children in Fairfield who are going to school on an irregular basis. Earlier this evening, you had the PAL presentation. What a remarkable program that is. And take a look at that funding mechanism, because it works. It really does work. Take a look at what the Kiwanis Clubs are doing, the Rotary Clubs are doing. When they hear your case, they may say, this is somewhat like Child Haven. Child Haven has a major fundraiser coming up in just a few more days, and they'll raise those funds. So, I bless you and really appreciate what you've done so far, but there's a lot of work to be done, and we don't have much time.
Mr. Mayor, can I add real quickly that I don't want you to leave here discouraged this evening, right? Because the city is your partner, and all of us want to see the Heather House succeed. We need the Heather House. So, don't leave discouraged. I hope that you leave encouraged, because you've been given some very helpful and specific guidance in terms of what this council has to entertain before we can vote on the funding request. So, are you clear on what it is you're going to be doing in the very near future to bring back to us for consideration?
Well...
Do you have any questions?
The question, it's not a question, it's how, well, the big question is how, for us to internalize, how we're going to do this, to make it, to make it effective. How, what resources are we going to go to, to use to make this happen?
So, you've got the City Manager saying he's going to get together a team of people to evaluate the propriety of an assessment by the city. That's a major, important step right there, that we know that the facility is trustworthy.
True.
Okay?
Got that.
So, that's important, and you know you're going to do that. I will close by just saying I, I agree with my colleague's comments. The mayor's comments were very specific and helpful in terms of resources. I would add to the list he gave you Linda Mahoney. If she's available and willing to give you some guidance, I would say Linda Mahoney knows how to make this machine work. She did it for, as you know, for many, many years, and I don't know what her relationship has been with the board, but if I were on the board, Linda Mahoney, I'd be on the phone with her when I leave this building, because she knows how to get it done. So, that's my recommendation. We look forward to you coming back, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Okay.
One, one parting comment for you. Don't be afraid to ask the people in the community who are familiar with what you're doing. Ask them to help you.
Okay.
And some of those folks are in this room this evening. Ask them.
All right.
I think they will. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, City Council, Fairing. I thank you.
Thank you. And there is no other business before this body. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.